Hour of 7:30 has arrived. I'd like to call to order this business meeting of District 116 for August 22nd, 2017. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Demmett.
Here. Quorum is present. Do we have any additions, corrections, or modifications?
None.
To the evening's agenda. We need a motion therefore to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. If at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We have no call for an executive session after this evening's meeting, so we're prepared for citizen's statements. If there's anyone that wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and turn it into our recording secretary. And seeing none, I'd like to take advantage of this opportunity to thank Joey Wright for running the camera for us tonight. And we're ready to move right on into our agenda because no one is coming forward to speak to us. So we'll begin tonight with an administrative report on lead testing and mitigation plan. And Don, I see you're getting ready for that. Do we need to adjust the lights so the folks, the camera will pick that up?
Is he shaking it like?
This is our high-tech boardroom.
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah, it's good. It's perfectly good. I mean, it's a little crooked, but...
Still crooked.
I mean, it's a...
I want to do a round of applause.
I mean, I don't know.
Oh, my goodness.
Flat.
Well, other directions.
Now you're gonna have to read.
I think you had to go the other direction.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, that's right. If that's your toughest challenge, then you're okay.
Many of you are aware of this issue already, but I want to spend some time discussing this with the board, answering any questions that you have, and reviewing what we've done to date regarding lead testing and mitigation. Just a little background. Senate Bill 0550 was signed by Governor Rauner on January 16th, 2017. It became Public Act 99-0922. It requires all schools pre-K through 5th grade to test for lead water used for drinking and cooking. Schools built after January 1st, 2000 are not required to test at this time. In Urbana School District 116, that includes Liel because Liel was completely renovated after January 1st, 2000, and Urbana Early Childhood School, which was completed construction in 2013. Sampling of all test sites must be completed by December 31st, 2017. So the sampling process and the standards and the reporting requirements of this law are that every fixture that is tested, that is either used for drinking water or cooking, must be sampled twice at the same time. The first sample is what's called a first draw or a standing draw, and that is the pipes and the fixtures have to have not been used for a minimum of eight hours prior to the test being taken. And you cannot turn it on and let it run and then take a sample. It's the first draw out of the tap, which is why it's called a first draw sample. The second draw sample is taken after it's run for 30 seconds. And so you're running the water for 30 seconds and then taking another sample. So those are the two samples that I will be reporting on. The state limit set by statute is five parts per billion, which means for every billion parts of water, there can be no more than five parts of that billion that have lead in it. Just to give you a perspective, the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal standards, is 15 parts per billion before they require mitigation. So Illinois standard is much higher than the federal government's. Any fixture that is at or above five parts per billion requires mitigation and notification of staff and families of that school. Reporting must include a variety of methods, including email, letter, and posting on the district website. So the lead testing, the testing that was done here at Urbana School District 116 was done on drinking fountains, some classroom sinks, all kitchen sinks, in Dr. King, Dr. Williams, Thomas Payne, Yankee Ridge, and Wiley, just after the last day of school in May. The testing cost the district $3,430. And as I said before, the water is required to stand in pipes and fixtures for a minimum of eight hours before the first draw sample. Just to give you an idea of the number of sites that were tested, Yankee Ridge had 17 samples, Dr. Williams had 15, Martin Luther King had 12, Wiley had 12, and Thomas Payne had 11. So the results of the testing are shown on this chart. Again, the first column is the building. The second column is the number of fixtures that were tested. And the third column is the number of fixtures that tested above five parts per billion on the first draw. So as you can see, there are three schools that had any fixtures at all tested above five parts per billion. Those three schools are Yankee Ridge, which had eight out of the 17 fixtures, tested above five parts per billion on the first draw, and Dr. Williams, which had two, and Thomas Payne, which also had two. Now, the other sample was what's called the second draw or the running water test. So if you take a look at that column, the number of fixtures that tested above five parts per billion on the 32nd running water test or the second draw were only at Yankee Ridge, and there were five of them. Okay? So none of the other schools had any detectable levels of lead after the 32nd draw. What does this mean? One, it means what we had been assured of by numerous people, and that is that our infrastructure in our schools is sound. We do not have lead in our piping systems in our schools. It also means that the water coming into our schools is clean. It's high quality. Many of you know that Illinois American Water has some of the highest-ranked water in the Midwest, thanks in part to the Mohammed Aquifer, but it also means that they do a great job filtering out any impurities in the water as well. So with that being said, we were able to very quickly identify that there were certain fixtures of a certain age that were made with lead components or had lead soldering inside the components of the fixtures themselves, not in the pipes, not in the infrastructure, and not in our intake lines or water feed lines. And so it made it fairly easy for us to do a mitigation plan. Just to give you, I'm going down specific results so you know exactly where these faucets are. So at Yankee Ridge, as I said, there were eight faucets that were indicated as being above the five parts per billion. And those eight fixtures, I should say, not faucets, consisted of a hallway drinking fountain near the library, a, two drinking fountains in a closet in Room 5, a drinking fountain in Room 6, the sink in Room 6, and the restroom sink in Room 6, as well as the fountain in Room 7 and the restroom sink in Room 7. Now, if you take a look at those numbers, you'll notice that most of them are not too far above five parts per billion with the exception of the two drinking fountains in the closet. Okay? Those two drinking fountains are in a closet that is not accessible to students. It's been used as a storage room. It is not a place that students have access to, and it is actually difficult for adults to gain access to without a little bit of effort. The second draw test there shows that of these eight fixtures, three of them came back with no detectable lead after the 32nd draw. And two others, the drinking fountain in Room 6 and the restroom sink in Room 7, came back under the five parts per billion limit set by statute, and a few others were just above. Obviously, the one that was still high above was locked in a closet. Now, I will say that one of the things that I've learned about lead from my research on the Environmental Protection Agency's website, as well as the Illinois Department of Public Health's website, which are very extensive and provide a lot of great educational information about lead in the environment, is that the longer water sits in a system, the more lead it's likely to absorb. These two drinking fountains, we can pretty much say that that lead was, that that water was sitting in those fixtures for months, if not years. And so there was much more water leaching in lead in those two fixtures than probably in any other place in the district. Lead testing at Dr. Williams, there were two sites. One was a kitchen sink, and the other one was a classroom sink in Room 118. As you can see, the kitchen sink poured after the second draw with no detectable trace of lead, and the sink in Room 118 after the 32nd draw was below the five parts per billion limit set by law. And then finally, we had two sinks at Thomas Payne. One was a kitchen, they both were in the kitchen, I'm sorry. One tested at 7.38 parts per billion, the other one at 21.7 parts per billion, but after the 32nd draw, they both ran with no detectable trace of lead. We have a lot of options when it comes to mitigation. Our first approach was that as soon as we got these results, we shut off water to all of those fixtures. We labeled them as not in service, and we covered them. I provided this picture up here because this is the closet in Room 5 at Yankee Ridge. That was as close as I could get to the drinking fountains without moving some pretty substantial amounts of furniture and stuff, I guess, that was stored in this closet. As you can see, they are, they're not easily accessible to students and probably haven't, have not been for years. It's not an area that is cleaned and updated as a place for washing hands or drinking. There are no paper towels in the paper towel dispenser, et cetera, but all of them have been covered and labeled like that. We also began the process of notification home to the families of Yankee Ridge, Dr. Williams, and Thomas Payne. That was completed on August 17th. We also released a press release on August 17th. We had substantial coverage by the News Gazette, WILL, and Fox Illinois. We have made sure that everyone understands that this is not a problem that is across our district. These are isolated to a few faucets. And what we're doing is we are taking those, I'm sorry, I said faucets. We're taking those fixtures out and replacing them. New fixtures have been ordered, and any fixture that tested high, and even a few extras, we're replacing. Why are we replacing a few extras? Well, because if you take a look at this photo, for the News Gazette photographer, we took off the black cover on this one just so that they could see the difference. This is actually in Yankee Ridge, in the hallway near the library. Okay? Well, this drinking fountain here was probably installed in the much more recent past because it's a self-cooling drinking fountain that tested clean, no detectable trace of lead for either one. It's right next to an old, probably original drinking fountain from the school. What the facility services team did is they went through all the buildings and they identified these same fixtures, and they said, "You know what? While we're at it, let's just tag all of these." Some of them ran completely clean. It's possible that they had their innards already worked on and lead taken out of them. It's also possible that they ran clean because they're used more often and they're flushed, which means that there's no lead that actually is allowed to seep into the system. The reason why we went above and beyond in terms of our cautiousness here is because lead is an environmental contaminant. We want it out of our schools and out of our systems, and so we're kind of going to the highest possible step. Many recommendations, in fact, the recommendation for us would have been simply just to flush these fixtures every morning before students arrive for 30 seconds because they would have run clean and therefore we wouldn't have had a cost to replace. However, we're taking this opportunity to take them out of the system altogether, and also according to law, we're not required to do this test more than once. But we will come back, retest all of these fixtures after they've been replaced, and continue to do regular tests and provide the board and the public with updates on this because our schools are safe, and we want to make sure that we have scientific data to back that up. And so, again, this is about providing safe, clean drinking water for our students and a safe kind of culture and climate for our parents to feel good about the facilities that they're sending their children to. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Two, what's the rationale for only doing elementary and not the middle school, high school?
That would be a legislative question, not for us. The law requires that it's done at any public school that serves children EC through grade 5. My guess is that part of the rationale there is the developing brain, the larger effect that lead poisoning has on development and developmental delays. That's my theory, but I have not gone back and looked at the debate on the floor of the Illinois General Assembly.
And then, just a second, if I could. Is the state providing any assistance with either the testing cost or the mitigation costs to school districts?
None. No. So it is, it is an unfunded mandate on every level. However, in my mind, this is an unfunded mandate that I'm not, I'm not afraid of and I'm not going to complain about because it's about the safety of our students. And so while it is a cost to us, it's a cost I'm willing to not wave at the state legislature or the governor and say it's an unfunded mandate.
Don, since two of the fixtures in Yankee Ridge have been in a locked-up closet that hasn't been used, are those just being stubbed and done, or are we spending money to replace fixtures that aren't used?
Matt, I don't know if you want to take that one?
On, on those fixtures that aren't being used, we're required by law to have certain amount of sources, drinking water per student. If they fall under that number, they'll just be capped off and removed. We won't be replacing them. We are replacing some that we obviously have to, drinking fountains, sinks, and faucets.
The thing about Yankee Ridge, as you know, it's under construction, and so we're working with our architects not to add drinking fountains, but to make sure that, yes, if these two do get capped off, that we're not going to have to come back and figure out something in the future. Again, these are outside of student use right now, and there haven't been really complaints or issues about it, but there are requirements in terms of the number of drinking fountains per student.
And I just want to tell Peggy, there's really now, since that happened in Michigan, a lot of evidence-based research done, and they're doing meta-analysis on elementary children. So that's why it's so focused because of the cognitive development, especially with the preschool. And, you know, the neurons, the brain attachment, all that has a lot to do with it. So I think in comparison to what I read, we were very, those scores on the lead, the measurements, is very, very low in comparison to some of the ones that I read on.
Yeah, I will say that the, if you, it's, it probably isn't appropriate to compare any of these numbers to the numbers that were coming out of Flint, Michigan. And I think that...
No, other studies too. It's not only Flint.
Right. No, but I think that you're, by raising Flint, you raise a very good point. The, one of the reasons for this law was in response to, or reaction to, the kind of tragedy and horror that happened in Flint, Michigan, which was a horrendous, you know, neglect and then handling of a public health issue. And the state of Illinois wants to do a better job. And so I would agree with you. For the most part, these are not numbers to be afraid of, but they're also numbers that we're going to have down to zero in no time because that's the way we want to run things. I will also say, unless there are other questions, Paul, you had a question?
Could you go back to the slide with the faucets from Yankee Ridge?
Yes. This one?
No. The table that had the rooms?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So what are Room 5, Room 6, and Room 7? Which rooms are they in the building?
Right. So they're down in the pod. So they're, they're down, they're the dance and drama, fine arts, and a kindergarten classroom, I believe.
Dance and drama and two kindergarten?
Dance and drama and two kindergarten classrooms.
Okay, great. I want to thank you for this, this really, really comprehensive and thorough explanation of exactly what's been going on. I think it'd be really useful, when the YouTube link is available, to have that sent out to the parents at Yankee Ridge so that they could also be, have easily, they could easily access this, this report.
Yep. We will do that. And the other thing I provided for you at your tables is the communication that went out. And because Yankee Ridge was the most impacted school, the, there are two, two pieces that are stapled together. One is the, the email that I sent out, the message that I sent out to all three of those buildings that contained a copy of the press release. And the second one is a, is a letter that Principal Brian Anderson sent out to all Yankee Ridge parents and guardians because he had a number of questions. And, you know, at open house, parents are walking through the building and they see, you know, they see these drinking fountains covered up, and they read the article in the paper on the 17th. And they know that, hey, there is lead in our water systems. So what does that mean? I applaud Brian for sending this follow-up one out, but we'll also post these on the superintendent's blog as well and put them out on social media. And then, as you said, when the YouTube clip comes up, we'll point, point families across the district to this because I agree. I think it's a, it's not only a public health concern, but it's also an opportunity for education about lead in our, in our environment. I will say that pretty much any house built prior to the 1980s has some amount of lead in the piping. And when I bought my first older house, it was recommended to me that I run the water for 30 seconds to a minute and a half prior to making coffee in the morning. And so that's just something that is part of the educational process around issues of lead in water. It's more common than I think many people realize, but it's also a higher factor of kind of fear and concern based on the recent events in Flint, Michigan, which, again, you can't really compare these two things at all in terms of severity, but it is one reason why this piece of legislation was passed when it was. Yep.
I just wanted to add something for this, for everyone. On the notification that we received from the agency on the testing, when those sources were identified, we responded immediately. Most sources were capped off and labeled or shut off within an hour's time. Then we started to formulate the plan on what we should do. You know, Don was researching, I'm sure more than I was, but I was researching as well. And we are replacing them, as he said. We do have mitigation that we can search for funds or insurance assistance. It's a $25,000 cap. The faucets that we have, they are all going to have the same spigot. So in case there's further mitigation, and if we want to do a stopgap where we put a filter on there, we can kind of economically purchase those filters, all like filters, so we'll buy them in bulk. Right now, if we were to do that route, every sink and every fountain and every source is almost completely different. So you have 3/4 inch, you'll have an inch, you'll have so forth and so on. So that means we would have to purchase these filters piecemeal. So we went about and did that. Now, the sinks, single handle sink, maybe $150, going up to $250 and so forth. So the drinking fountains obviously would be more. So we do have the opportunity, and I'm going to work with Carol, and we're going to try to, we're going to try to get what we can out of that for assistance. The testing and the retesting, we are not eligible for at all, so we would have to pay for it again. But I would advise that we, we do that just for the public and just for, for the health of the school. That's all.
My opinion is this is an instance where nickel and diming and worrying about costs of that level of magnitude, which isn't high. It's a small cost compared to the risk. And so move ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, I think, unless there's other questions? All right. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing. And it's the only time I use the gavel in the middle of the meeting, but the public hearing is open. The purpose of the public hearing is concerning our intent to issue $11 million worth of working cash bonds. And this is just to finally put into place the final financing package for the Yankee Ridge project. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the board regarding this issue? Anyone wish to address the board? Anyone wish to address the board? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. We moved on to communications and reports. We have none of those this evening. We do have a consent agenda with several items on it. And so looking through that consent agenda, it includes the minutes of the business meeting of June 20th, the study session of August 8th, our June bills and checks, education fund in the amount of $414,000, operations and maintenance fund bills in the amount of $155,000, bond and interest fund, $933,000, transportation fund, $583,000, working cash bonds, $17,000, indoor aquatic centers, $7,000, school facility occupation tax, sales tax, $66,000, tort, $20,000, and payroll of $3.8 million. We have July bills and checks, education fund in the amount of $952,000, operations and maintenance fund bills in the amount of $435,000, transportation fund, $38,000, working cash bonds in the amount of $336,000, and those are related once again to the Yankee Ridge project. School sales tax, also Yankee Ridge, $508,000, tort, $236,000, life safety levy in the amount of $205,000. I imagine that is also related to Yankee Ridge, and payroll of $3 million. And adult education fund bills for both June and July in the amount of $170,000. There were several working cash loan repayments made, and they, from the operations and maintenance fund to, this is new loans, Carol, or is this repayment? Sorry, I got it right. From the O&amp;M fund in the amount of $1 million, from the transportation fund in the amount of $400,000, tort fund in the amount of $200,000, and IMRF in the amount of $340,000. We have several personnel items, several pages. It is the beginning of the school year. And so there were a few new positions I noticed outlined in there, but mostly it's new people replacing people that have left or retired or for whatever reason. We have a resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property, which has to do with some functional equipment for the swimming pool and some older vehicles and shelving. New activity account for orchestra music, music boosters. And that's it for the consent agenda. Is there any desire to remove any of those items from the consent agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none. A motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Demmett.
Yes. Next, we have... Yes. Next, we have individual action items, and those begin with gifts. And we have a total of $1,125 donated to the Michael Pollak History Scholarship Fund by Jim Ward, Albert Veloki, and Ann Heinz-Silves, John and Kendra Stewart, Belden Fields, Carl Radnitzer, Carolyn Norman-Backsley, Keith and Sarah Kelly, Betsy Pollak, Maria Ryan, Marie Bellington, Margaret Miller, and James Lebovita, and Margaret Mary Foss, and Marilyn Epabont. And then also, the following donations were made to the Willie T. Somerville Scholarship Fund totaling $450, and those came from Margaret Miller, Carl Radnitzer, Stacy Peterick, Ellen Elrich, Karen De Bush, Darren Hicks, Vern and Elise Fine, Marilyn Beckman, and David and Terry Adcock. And then we also had donations made to the Preston Williams Jr. Elementary in honor of Oda Dasit's retirement totaling $370 from Jane Quinlan, Barb Daly, Ideal Engineering, and Carol Baker. And also, Carolyn, Carla, and Oda Dasit donated $500 to the elementary school library in honor of Oda's retirement. And the family of Jean Burkholder donated $750 to Urbana Dull Education Center. Motion to receive these gifts and send thank you notes would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion is carried. And then we have an isolated personnel item, just to draw attention to it for our administrative personnel item, so is that?
That's me.
Kathy?
I'm happy this is the final piece of the puzzle for our administrators serving our schools. I'm pleased to announce Thomas Majors is our new interim assistant principal of Dr. Preston L. Williams Jr. Elementary School. Mr. Majors is taking over the helm from Ms. Danielle Jackson, who's now principal of that school. The Dr. Williams community welcomes Mr. Majors from Urbana Middle School, where he was an eighth grade math teacher from August 2013 until the end of the most recent school year. At UMS, he also served as team facilitator for a cross-curricular eighth grade team and the president of the Urbana Education Association. Tom Majors started his teaching career in 2009 as a fourth grade teacher in Bonfield Grade School in Herschel, Illinois. He also spent a year as an academically talented enrichment teacher at Bonfield and Reddick Grade Schools. Tom Majors earned a Master of Education in Education Policy Organization and Leadership from the U of I in Urbana-Champaign, and his Bachelor's Degree of Arts with honors is in elementary education, and he earned that at Roosevelt University. Please help me welcome to his new administrative position, Tom Majors.
I promise it's not. I promise it's not because I know how to tie a bowtie. I am excited to take on this role as assistant principal at Dr. Williams Elementary. My wife and I moved here four years ago, looking for a multicultural community with a great school system. Both of us had grown up in central Illinois where multiculturalism was not the norm, so we were looking for something new. And we came to Urbana, and we found the Urbana School District, and we have been very, very pleased ever since. So therefore, to take this opportunity as a, in a school here, is the high point of my career. I'm looking forward to working with you, the school board, other district administrators, and the community as a whole to ensure that Dr. Williams is continually meeting the needs of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. All right, we've approached the point on our agenda where we have a call, we do not have a call for special executive meetings, so we're ready for our superintendent's report.
Thought I would stay here because I have a couple multimedia things to do. Before I do that, though, I would like to give an update and a statement about Senate Bill One and the school funding. We have now missed our second general state aid payment for the year. This is the first time in the history of this school district that we have missed even one general state aid payment at the beginning of the school year, and now we are missing two. Last week, the Senate in Illinois overrode the governor's mandatory veto of Senate Bill One. Tomorrow, there will be a rally in Springfield, and the House of, the Illinois House, will be calling the vote on an override of Senate Bill One, of the governor's mandatory veto. As I stated at our last board meeting, and I've spoken to the press many times about this, one of the important things to note is that if the vote fails tomorrow, there is not another option. It goes back to square one. Senate Bill One has been crafted, debated, altered, and amended for the last two and a half years. It is by far the best piece of legislation that we have seen as a state that moves us in the direction of a more equitable funding formula. It doesn't make us perfect, and it doesn't magically make Illinois the most equitable state in school funding, but it does go a long way in that direction. The fact that we are here with many school districts already one or two weeks into the school year and no K-12 budget because of the politics that are being played out in Springfield is beyond disappointing to me. We are left with a decision that our state legislatures, especially the members of the House, will have to make tomorrow or in the subsequent few days. I urge all of you to contact not just your local representative, Representative Ammons, but also neighboring representatives who represent the 102nd, the 104th, and the 101st districts. Anyone who is here in central Illinois has a stake in making sure that the vote tomorrow or in the next few days goes in favor of public education and goes in favor of equity. I will be posting information on how to contact any representative in the state on my blog and putting it out on social media. I encourage people, the listening audience, as well as members in this room, to please contact members of the House of Representatives in the next 24 hours and urge them to vote to override the mandatory veto on SB One. That's the serious. The rest is pretty serious too, actually, because when we start a school year, we do it, we do it in serious ways that I think only Urbana can. I would like to point out, so one other thing that I will, that's not related to the beginning of the school year, but is quite an honor, is this Friday afternoon, members of the Yavapai Tribe, who represents the family and descendants of Wasaja, who was an Urbana High School graduate from the 1800s, he was the first American Indian to earn a doctorate, and he graduated from the University of Illinois as an M.D. And he then went on to become an activist, a civil rights activist, and a doctor working on reservations and for Indian rights causes throughout the 20th century. Members of the Yavapai Tribe will be visiting Urbana and Urbana-Champaign to view Wasaja Hall, which opened last year at the University of Illinois campus. Yeah, two of them are his actual descendants who will be here. And on Friday afternoon, they will be coming to Urbana High School. And while Wasaja did not actually attend the Urbana High School that's standing there, he actually attended Thornburn, which is no longer standing, but is where Phillips Recreation Center is, they wanted to come and see the school district that he graduated from, and they wanted to see what it's like now. And so, honored to be able to host some of the leaders of the Yavapai Tribe, as well as some of Wasaja's descendants. That will be Friday afternoon, and I've been working with Mr. Stark, as well as members of the University of Illinois, to arrange that visit, and it should be a very exciting, exciting opportunity for us as a school district, as well as for our students, who will get a chance to meet and talk to some of Wasaja's descendants. So, speaking of the beginning of school, I will say that we had quite an interesting start, and if I am technologically savvy enough here, and if we could get the lights So we had a Facebook Live post that, as you can see, had over 5,442 views. That is, I believe, I think I can claim this, to be the most viral video we've had, and I don't know, Todd, do you know? You don't know the number?
I do.
You do know the number? So it's the second most viral video? Yeah, okay. We will leave that there, and those of you that want to find the most viral video can look it up.
It's the most viral on Facebook.
Oh, this is the most viral using the Facebook platform? Thank you. And Facebook Live is a medium. So, this is posted by Urbana High School, I believe it was filmed by Joanne Geigner, who's our communication specialist and videographer for the day. And this is the way we welcome our freshmen to Urbana. I want to make sure that I have the sound up before I... Oh, really, offering? Did you have something to add? So it goes on for another five minutes, and they actually do get to honor Urbana, which is quite rousing. And I would encourage you all, if you're on Facebook at all, to take a moment to read some of the comments, because they are, they are in many ways inspiring, sometimes humorous, and really get at the heart of who we are at Urbana. There were several people that do not attend Urbana High School and have not been students at Urbana High School that were saying, wow, I wish my school did this, so. So that's number one. Number two, in terms of my video production here, is, let me make sure. Yes. Earlier this week, we had a very cool event, and... Let me try again. Apparently, there we go. Okay. There we go. So, very pleased with how well the teachers, students, and everyone handled the eclipse, very much enjoyed seeing and talking to students about their experience and about what they were expecting versus what really happened. But they all very much enjoyed the opportunity to go out and see this amazing event take place. You saw some of the students were actually drawing and responding and writing to what they were witnessing as they were observing this amazing natural feat. Finally, speaking of nature, and speaking of natural feats, and speaking of Urbana being way ahead of the curve in all things we do, I'm pleased to announce that we are also the first in Champaign County to have not just a sighting, but a capture of a live wild armadillo. There you go. Any questions? I'll wait till the lights come on, and apparently I have music playing still. There we go.
So what are you going to do with the armadillo?
The armadillo is a wild animal.
Yeah.
And as such, we actually called two different Department of Natural Resources, and let me back up. I need to give full credit, one to the photographers and two to the amazing animal handlers that we employ here. The, hey, I've watched cousins try to catch an armadillo, and it's not an easy feat. That's down in Florida. I don't know what this armadillo is doing here, but it traveled. No, it actually, if you read, the armadillos are moving north because of the warming weathers, and as of May, there were armadillos spotted in Douglas County, and so we are next in line. Of course, they come to Urbana High School because they want to get educated about the culture and community, and they heard that it was a great place to be. Unfortunately, tigers pretty much beat armadillos all the time, and we did not eat the armadillo, though, and it did not end up as roadkill. No, Kevin Collins, who's one of our crew, who you'll often see taking care of the front yard there at Urbana High School, and Jamal Davis, J.J. Davis, who's one of our custodians at Urbana High School, spotted this armadillo running across the front lawn, and I mean front lawn at Race Street, of Urbana High School. And it was hiding in the bushes and trying to get away from them, and they captured it and spent some time trying to figure out how to dispose of it humanely. And they did dispose of it humanely, but we expected... And they did dispose of it humanely, but we expected all kinds of people wanting to get it. But no, everyone we called said, no, pretty much just need to let it go, because it's a wild animal and it's okay. So, we did call two, two different departments of, the Department, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, as well as University of Illinois Small Animal Clinic. Because it wasn't injured, they didn't want it, and we called Anything Wild, who we use quite a bit for animal extractions, and they said, well, you already caught it, so you don't really need us. But they came out and looked at it and had quite a few pictures, and it made its way around Facebook, but it did not have 5,400 views. Mr. Stark? I bet if he would have been dancing with the armadillo.
Yeah.
So, at any rate, we're, we're excited to be the first school in Champaign County to host an armadillo. The armadillo was captured humanely and let go humanely in a less populated area.
Okay.
That's all I will say. Any other questions for me?
Is that it for your report?
I think I'm done, yes.
Is there, well, I...
Oh.
Well, somebody has to.
The FOIA's, we did have a number of FOIA's, the Chicago Lawyers Committee FOIA'd information about student disciplinary records and policies. P. Ingram had four FOIA's that all revolved around the QSCB applications and bonds, and all four, all five of those FOIA's were completed and returned to the person requesting information. That's it.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? Moving on to board reports, then. Any board reports this evening?
Don did participate in the bookbag giveaway. He was coming with a card, so, we gave away, what, was it a hundred? Bookbags filled with all kinds of, like crayons, notepads, and they were different kind of bookbag, and you should have seen the smile on those families' face. They were so impressed. Dion was out there, and Yolanda was out there, and Mr. Waller came out, so, the schools were very well represented. So...
Todd was out there?
Todd, oh, yeah, Todd, I'm sorry, Todd was there, so I thought, because the families were just enthused, they said, the superintendent's here, too, and they were just really enthused about that. So, I just want to say, Don, thank you, and there was an opportunity for kids to have bookbags. And it was put on by Shannon McFarland, and then her whole family was out there, too, participating.
Yes, Shannon McFarland is an Urbana High School graduate.
And then Prince Roberts.
Yep.
Yeah, Prince Roberts, who does a lot within ACP. So, I, I thought that was great, seeing all those kids, and they had on tiger shirts, some of them.
Yep.
So, and the parents. So, thank you, and go Urbana.
Okay, others? Yes, Ann?
I don't have a report. I just have a quick question. Did we hear how registration went? Did we get feedback from parents, and if they...
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually give a, an update at the next board meeting as part of an administrative report that goes along with the six-day enrollment. We had probably one of the best registrations in terms of numbers that we've had. I believe that we were close to eighty, eighty percent.
Wow.
And we had, again, it's a shorter, shorter version, more focused amount of time. We had people posting on social media the amount of time that it took them to get through registration from start to finish, and that was kind of fun, because they were, even at the most crowded times, they were posting times of 20 to 25 minutes to go from start to finish, and granted, they were families with one or two children and returning, but they, we actually got quite a bit of positive social media about that as well, that it's one-stop shopping, and it went very well. So, but yes, you'll, you'll be hearing more about that, as well as more about our new hires at the next board meeting.
And I just want to say, I was representing Rosecrantz, but those families, really, with those kids, picked up a lot of literature as far as mental health services were, and so, I was also, and I didn't let Don know, impressed with that. They were steady getting that and asking what it was. So, I do want you to know, they're trying to be, you know, more educated on what mental health is, as far as five-year-olds and six-year-olds, so I thought that was great, too.
Okay, other, other board reports? In case you didn't see the news tonight, we have a D1 recruit amongst our midst, and Luke Luffman is committed to the University of Illinois. Luke Luffman for wrestling. So, to have a D1 scholarship athlete out of Urbana, it doesn't happen too frequently, and this is a, this is good. This is good.
Yeah, we've had, we've had Luke in front of the board before for his accomplishments in wrestling.
Yes.
And, yeah, to, to be committing, he's not a senior yet, either.
Oh.
Right.
And so, so that's, that's, he's a junior.
Junior.
Yes, yes.
Was number two in the country in Greco-Roman Wrestling National Tournament.
Luffman.
Luffman. L-U-F-F. All right. If there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Who seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried, we're done. Thank you.